I can call the meeting order, please. Kate Lynn, if you'll call the roll.
Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Vouch.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Aquormas present, your honor.
Thank you. I understand that our chief of police, Mike Davis, is going to lead us into prayer. Invite you to stand, please.
Amen.
Let's pray. Thank you, dear Lord, for this day and opportunity to come to city council and take care of the city's affairs. Help us to do wisely whatever it is we do for the citizens of North Little Rock. Watch over us. Keep our men and women on the street. The police fire mems safe throughout the rest of this week and throughout the rest of this year, Lord. And thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight for these things. We pray, amen.
Amen.
Applause.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Okay, let's go into the communications real quickly. Anybody want to pull?
Number two.
We have two. Okay, how about a motion to approve number one?
So move.
Second. Motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Okay, let's read number two.
Not in its entirety. She doesn't entirely, because I would like to ask Mr. Carter to explain.
Okay.
Communication number two, Jason Carter, city attorney, letter to Mayor Smith and city council regarding recommendations for investment advisory board.
So in 2014, we adopted a resolution where we established kind of an internal investment advisory board, trying to get a better return on our investments and looking at what our monetary position is in the city. The investment advisory board met last Friday. Two of the things that we discussed were our 2011 bond issue and our 2012 C bond issue. We had several bond issues in 2012. This is issue C. As far as the 2011 bond issue goes, it appears with some of the analysis that we could get some good savings on our interest payments. We keep the same payback terms as we currently have. In other words, the bond would pay off at the same time, but we'd save about $175,000 a year in interest payments. So that's why we think that that's advisable. I say "we." I'm an ex officio member. I'm not a voting member of the investment advisory board. I sit on the board as an ex officio member, but the board unanimously supported that proposition. In regard to the 2012 C issue, that's the smallest outstanding bond that we have. The annual debt service on it is almost 1.5 million annually, and we could retire those bonds for a little over 7.9 million and free up that cash payment. As noted in my comments and as part of our discussion, by doing that, you know, we lessen the amount of cash reserves that we have, but it was the opinion of the board that that's manageable. The likelihood that we were going to have a severe enough event that we would require the level of reserves that we have is pretty nominal, and if it were to arise, that we'd have enough reserves to carry us to the point in time that we could have Amendment 78 financing or another bond issue to come up with the cash that we needed to make it through that event.
Question.
With the savings, what's the anticipated use of the savings?
With the 1.5 million that we would save in avoiding those bond payments, we'd like to have that, you know, retain those savings to rebuild our reserves, because we're going to deplete, you know, some of our reserves in order to pay off that debt early. So we'd like to track those funds back into our reserve accounts. Of the 2011 issue, the interest savings would just be for the appropriation of city councils as they determine, you know, I'm sure the department will have a recommended use of those funds, but that'll be subject to the approval of city council.
It will be my intent to, you know, over a several-year period, to grow that reserve account back up to where it was, and we might be able to make another payment towards our bonds. So it's making sense to do this. We had that 10 million sitting there for two or three years, and we found out after, you know, we got into the new way that we buy power and everything, that we really didn't need it, and it makes sense to cut those interest rates down. We were earning maybe a point on that 10 million, and we were paying 3% or 4%. So I think it was the right thing to do, and I think the committee made the right decision on that. Questions about a motion?
So move.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes. Mayor, I'm assuming you'll bring back legislation?
Yes. Excuse me?
You'll bring back legislation?
Yes. Special call.
Special call from Jason Carter, city attorney, sent Friday, May 20th, 2016, regarding special meeting of the North Rock City Council at 6:00 PM on Monday, May 23rd, 2016. Honorable members of the North Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Rock City Council at 6:00 PM on Monday, May 23rd, 2016, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. R-1695, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sell property located at 216 West Fourth Street in the city of North Rock to Alan Ingstrom. O-1634, an ordinance amending ordinance number 7888, the business license fee schedule. Pursuant to Section 2-48/2 of the North Rock Municipal Code, you're entitled to 72 hours electronic notice of this meeting. All members were notified.
So move.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Okay, let's just go right on into that, and we got public comment, sign-in sheet, and it looks like everybody's signed in to talk about R-1695. So before we call that, let's hear from the public. Sharonda, you're up first. Sharonda Lipscomb.
Good evening. Sharonda Lipscomb, president-elect for the Junior League of North Little Rock, and I have remarks on behalf of our president, Kelly Phillips, who could not be here tonight, and I'll read her statement. To the city council, mayor, Junior League of North Little Rock Board and members and other guests, I apologize for not being able to attend this very important council meeting that impacts the future of the Junior League of North Little Rock. Due to prior professional obligations and to the speed and unexpected nature of this transaction, I regret that I could not deliver these heartfelt words to you in person. On behalf of the Junior League of North Little Rock, I want to express my appreciation for your continued support of the Junior League of North Little Rock. The mayor especially has always been a champion of who we are and what we do, and this support has allowed us to continue our purpose of training volunteers and leaders and changing lives through service to women and children. While we are saddened by the proposed sale of the Menees House, we understand the reason for the sale and look forward to finding a solution for our organization's new home. We know that the Junior League of North Little Rock will continue to be a resource to North Little Rock and the surrounding communities for many years to come. As we approach 70 years of service, the Junior League is continuing to impact lives in the community wherever our headquarters may be. We appreciate your consideration in helping us, excuse me, in helping fund our transaction due to the immediacy and disruptiveness of this event. Please know that we will be fiscally responsible stewards of the funds, and they will go toward their intended use in helping us find a permanent space that works for the Junior League and its programs. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Kelly Phillips, 2016-2017 president, Junior League of North Little Rock.
Thank you, Sharonda. Let me make a comment right there, if I may. I've met with this group a couple of times, and with Kelly coming in and Sharonda as the next president, these two women are very, very professional in the way they handle themselves and the issues that are involved in this. And so I want to say thank you very much for your professionalism, and with you two as the leaders over the next two years, I know that the Junior League will continue to prosper. Okay, Alan Ingstrom.
I just wanted to make myself available to make a few comments. I appreciate your consideration tonight. I was born and raised in North Little Rock, graduated from North Little Rock High School. My grandfather founded his business in North Little Rock. My father founded his business in North Little Rock, and when it came time for me to decide where I wanted to found my business, it was North Little Rock. And so I just wanted to express my commitment to continuing to operate my business here and grow my business, and also wanted to say we are committed to taking good care of the Menees House. I'm very mindful of the history of the house, and we will endeavor to be good stewards of that property, so.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions for Alan? Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me this time. It's a pleasure for me to come into downtown North Little Rock and drive past 600 Main, where my family contributed what it could to the vitality of Argenta for 91 years and where I spent 40 years of my working life, trying to do a little bit toward downtown redevelopment with a series of mayors, a series of chambers of commerce. And I love driving past 507 Main, where we renovated the building to National Historic Register status, just as this building, the Menees Building, has been renovated, and where, as the first president of Main Street Argenta, we held our meetings for the first five or six years of Main Street Argenta, and also tried to contribute to downtown development. And so it is that I'm complimentary of you, mayor, and the council for what you're doing here for further development of downtown Argenta. But I would like to add a few remarks. The businesses in North Shore Business Park are 100 times the numbers of employees in this instance, with 1,000 to 2,000 employees, and 100 times the...
Gene, I'm sorry, this comment is on this particular piece of legislation only. Public comment is after. Did you sign up for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Can it be after the meeting?
Okay. My comments, I've read them, and they take 45 seconds. Would you like me to wait and do it afterwards, or do it now?
Go ahead.
There's $100 million of investment at North Shore Business Park, and the owners of those businesses have pleaded with this council and you, mayor, for some relief from the congested single entrance by supporting a viable second entrance. There are developed lots and vacant land in North Shore Business Park capable of supporting a doubling or tripling of those numbers. There's not a building in North Shore Business Park with fewer than 20 employees or an investment of less than $2.5 million. If 10 to 20 jobs and $1 million of investment is a worthy consideration for this council, and it is, and I fully support this effort, then I ask, why isn't it worth the consideration of you, mayor, and this city council for the future potential of North Shore Business Park by allowing us to have a viable second entrance, as we have tried to do? Thank you.
Good evening. If you will, I would just like to read just a little bit of the history of the E.O. Menees House. In 1962, the Junior Service League of North Little Rock, later becoming the Junior League of North Little Rock, in 1978, was awarded a 99-year lease and began restoration on the home. Efforts to restore the Menees House continued as the chapter house was placed on the National Registry of Historic Places and granted $10,000 in matching funds for continued restoration in 1976. Later, in 2010, the Menees House underwent another phase of renovations to enhance the historical beauty of the home. Today, the Menees House is reminiscent of the matrimonial legacy led by the Menees family as couples rent the home to create wedding memories of their own. Over the years, the Menees House has transcended beyond a wedding and reception venue, becoming the perfect setting for meetings, rehearsal dinners, bridal and baby showers, corporate celebrations, and other events. The Junior League of North Little Rock is a member of the Association of the Junior Leagues International. As an organization of women, members of the Junior League of North Little Rock are committed to promoting volunteerism, developing the potential of women, and improving communities through the effective action and leadership of trained volunteers. The Junior League's primary goal is to promote education and charity, reaching out to women and families. As a league of women of all races, religion, and national origins, the members of the Junior League of North Little Rock demonstrate a common interest in the commitment of volunteerism by embracing mankind. In addition to its humble yet rich history, the E.O. Menees House thrives off of a heritage that bolsters community pride. As the headquarters of the Junior League of North Little Rock, the Menees House serves as a staple of the community. Proceeds from the rentals of the Menees House are used to support junior league projects such as literacy initiatives, district school partnerships, community grants, scholarships, and much more. I stand here today as the past president of the Junior League of North Little Rock. Just last year alone, we were able to impact over 1,000 students by providing school supplies and books. This is because we're able to host fundraisers at the Menees House as well as through our rentals. For the life of me, I cannot understand why we would lose such an important part of the North Little Rock community only to obtain a few parking spaces for a business, and I had to stand here and make those remarks. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, let's call that legislation, please.
Okay. R-1695, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sell property located at 216 West Fourth Street, Menees House property, in the city of North Rock to Alan Ingstrom.
Move for adoption.
Second. Questions? Ms. Ross?
I do have some questions. I think one of the rings that I've heard that was the speed that this, that there wasn't enough time for some of them to actually, you know, to get all the information that was needed on this, and the previous members. I know that the current members may have known more than what the previous members did, so that was one of the concerns that I've heard. The other that I've heard, too, is that the upkeep on the house has been a strain on the Junior League. I don't know, no one has addressed that to us.
Well, I mean, the other day, when we were meeting, somebody found a note in the minutes from 15 or 20 years ago, and the conversation then was the same as it is now, that the Menees House was a heavy load for the Junior League to carry, and they were even considering giving up the league house 20-something years ago. So it's expensive to manage that house, and I believe the number was told to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that it was only rented six times last year. So it's not raising a whole lot of money, because it needs some work, and it needs to be loved on a little bit, and we don't have the money to love on it, and I don't think the league does either. So the quickness of it, we've literally been working with Alan for over a year, trying to figure out a way to satisfy his growth and his investment, and we couldn't get there. And he is running out of time to start his growth of his company, and so the Junior League knew about it within four or five days of when I knew about it. So it's not like I've been holding on to this for a long time. He needs to make a decision. He needs to go forward with his plans, and if he can't do his expansion here in North Little Rock, he's going to have to go somewhere else. Go ahead.
And one other thing, and I have heard from some about this, is that, I don't know if this is correct, I don't know, this was just a number, there's some, that the expense is around $1,600 a month, just the upkeep on that house alone.
Yeah, I don't know that.
And I don't know if that's the number or not, but, you know, and I've heard from some that said that this is a blessing in disguise, because the upkeep is such a burden on the house, that it's a good chance to regroup and possibly find something affordable.
Ms. Robinson?
I think I heard that they had a 99-year lease, so we're just able to break that lease?
Well, actually, the lease expired in 2010. We, in the legislation, you'll see that we appropriated $36,000 out of the sale of the property to go to the organization to help them with moving, storage, you know, if they have to rent a place. You know, I took Kelly and Sharonda out to the North Little Rock Women's Club, let them look at that to see if they could use that, you know, they meet twice a month. The executive committee meets once a month, and then the general membership meets once a month. Isn't that right?
We have committee meetings. We have a bunch of committee meetings. That's not accurate.
Right. Okay, that's not accurate. Ms. White?
I had an inquiry from someone in the community, which was more in the area of the historic relevance of the building, and I talked to Sandra Taylor Smith. I think she sent you the same email this afternoon and answered my questions about whether this could just be gone in and changed greatly. And she, at the time I spoke to her this morning, she wasn't even certain that it fell under the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program. She wasn't sure if there was an easement or not, but that was confirmed, and because of that, it kind of shores up our historic classification of that building, in that anybody that wanted to do anything to the building that was against what the Historic Commission would say, would have to get, go through several layers, the Historic District Commission, and they'd have to have a certificate of appropriateness. There's quite a few levels, so it's not going to just happen that somebody can go in and change it, because it's in an easement.
Then Alan's where they...
Right.
Yeah. Mr. Vouch?
Other than the money that we've promised them and the relocation of the facility, or the Junior League, what are the anticipated uses of the additional funds from the sale?
Well, it's my intention, and it's in the legislation, that it'll go in the special project fund, just like when we sold that property over there, Catty Corner from the fire station, that it goes in that special project fund, and I would anticipate that we will try to use that towards our new plaza at 6 Main.
Can I ask a question? We have not been pricked in the legislature.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I, actually, I looked through there. Jason, did you add that after we talked last week?
Yes, the section four was added after we had talked about it, and that's that closing would not occur before December 15th.
Yeah, we're going to close in December, so you've got, you know, get your fundraiser done in November and give us plenty of time to help you. You know, I'm going to help you. Okay. On the motion, Mr. Robinson?
Well, I guess, and I hate that I'm so confused so many times, but Alderman Ross is, she threw out some numbers about some expenses, and I'm looking at these ladies, and they're looking like that's not true, and I'm just trying to figure out, okay, is it true? Is it not true? I mean, do you guys have those kind of expenses? Do you not? I mean, what's the deal?
We do have those, around those, that amount of expenses, but we've been making up. So I think that that was the look that we saw, is that we've been doing it.
So the 1,600 is not a burden?
She needs to come to the microphone, mayor. She needs to come to the microphone.
Yeah. Vanessa, you want to come to the microphone?
If you cannot tell, my heart is in the E.O. Menees House. It is my second home and has been for over seven years, and so it saddens me. So maybe the looks that you observed were in that realm, but the expenses are a burden, as with my home expenses are a burden, but I do it every month, and we're doing it. We're committed to fundraising and being able to pour back into the community of North Little Rock. That's what saddens me, because I do not know, I can't stand here and say that we will be able to go on without. That is our identity. That is how the community identifies us, is that headquarters. If you Google it, it's going to come up, the headquarters of the Junior League of North Little Rock. So yes, we do have expenses, as with any other business. I don't know what else to say.
Thank you.
While I'm here, could I ask a question, Mayor Joe?
Sure.
I heard you say that the lease expired in 2010. Do you know when it began? I haven't been able to locate when it began, because if it was a 99-year lease...
No, it was 1989. It was the summer of 1989, and it expired in 2010. I looked at it. City clerks got it.
We've got copies of all of them.
Okay.
Yeah, it was 1989.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on the motion.
Motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you all of y'all for being here tonight, and I assure you that we will help you in your relocation and do everything we can do to keep the Junior League strong. Let's go to the next legislation, special call.
O-1634, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 7888, the business license fee schedule, first reading.
Is that mine? I thought that was yours, Ms. Ross.
Yes, it's both of ours.
Is that okay?
Sure. We're both on it.
Okay.
Should be.
All right, go ahead. Yeah. How about a motion? Suspend?
Move suspend the readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend the readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes, but I have some comments afterward, yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I do have some comments, and I've spoken with Mr. Carter. What this does, you know, when we were originally speaking, you know, the fee and everything is just, this is just setting the fee, because there's also some zoning that's possibly going to be needed on this, planning before they can issue, I mean, to get a business license, you have to have a zoning certificate from planning. That's one of the requirements of planning. So, Mr. Carter, that is, that's thrown in...
That's Mr. Spencer, too, so I'm not the only one under that bus.
Okay, all right. So anyway, this has been lobbed to Mr. Carter's court now, because the zoning, as far as that.
Right, we've got to, we've got to get on top of the zoning piece of this as well, so, and I'll work with planning on that.
We want to make it as simple as possible, but we also want to protect our neighborhoods.
Right, I agree. Sean, you're on top of that. Make sure, Jason, you're his shotgun. Okay. All right, consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mayor, don't you need a motion to accept the consent?
I don't know. Do you?
Never had before.
I believe you do.
Okay, how about it?
So move.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. How's that? I want to thank all those people that are working on this pace. It's been slow-moving, but we think that the mall is going to get that thing kicked off sooner than later. New business?
New business. R. 1689, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution expressing the willingness of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas to utilize state grant funds for the renovations to North Rock Health Department facilities located at 2800 Willow Street.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Any questions, comments on the motion?
Ms. Woods is here.
I'm sorry. Do we have a, do we have a PowerPoint?
There's a ghost in there.
No.
Okay, this is, we're going on to the next one. All right, y'all won't carry to say anything? Tell us what's going to go on. Carrie, you want to come up and, and tell us what this grant's going to do for the building?
Well, if I'm successful in, in getting the funding for this, our local health unit, we'll be able to expand our services. We currently only have two exam rooms. It'll expand to six exam rooms. We will remodel our, our whole front end as far as where, how we centralize our clerical staff, our HVAC. From what Mr. Clements has told me, the architect that came in and took a look at it, his representative said that it would, it probably had five to seven additional years left. And then it would probably run the city somewhere between 50 to maybe $70,000 to replace. You know, the chiller alone would probably run about $50,000. And so with, with this, you know, it would actually, you know, take, this grant would actually take care of that. I would also be able to pull my environmental health inspectors back into the clinic, eliminate paying rent that I'm currently paying, $500 a month. It would, our heating and cooling system, it would, we'd be able to put more insulation into the building. This building was built in 63. It's never seen a major remodel. This would be a major remodel.
Thank you, Carrie. Do I have a motion?
Sir, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Backster?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R. 1690, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving settlement in the condemnation case of North Rock versus John L. Pride appropriating funds.
Move for adoption.
Second. Any questions, Ms. Ross?
Can Mr. Carter explain?
Yes. So this is our overpass project. It's an 80/20 project, so 20% city funds, 80% funds that flow through Arkansas Highway Transportation Department. They handle a lot of these cases, so when we, we only had one parcel that was, you know, we exercised eminent domain over. And we've communicated ongoingly with the Highway Transportation Department over the valuation of the property in this case, seeing how 80% of the cost is their pocket and 20% of the cost is ours. They've agreed that this is a fair settlement. It's somewhat on our side of the midpoint between experts, our expert and theirs. And it will require, you know, the difference between what's been pled into the court already and what the settlement value would be. 20% of that would be the city's cost. So I want you to be aware of that. The rest of that would be a cost that would be carried by the Highway Transportation Department.
Right.
But we believe it's a fair settlement.
We have that money appropriated, so it's in, it's in the bank. Okay, on the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Backster?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R. 1691, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1604 Share Street in the city of North Rock to constitute a public nuisance in condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing on 1604 Share Street. Anyone here to speak on 1604 Share? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Backster?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R. 1692, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 119 East 14th Street in the city of North Rock to constitute a public nuisance in condemning said structure, providing a period of time for property owners to abate said nuisance.
So move.
Second. Call a public hearing on 119 East 14th Street. Anyone here to speak on 119 East 14th Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Backster?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R. 1693, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 6501 Holt Road in the city of North Rock to constitute a public nuisance in condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing on 6501 Holt Road. Anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Backster?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R. 1694, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Placy County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Rock, Arkansas as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption. Second. Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on public nuisances for grass-cutting and abatement of other nuisances? Please come to the microphone. Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion. Ms. Ross, I'm sorry.
This is Mr. Carter's lucky day. I have a question for him. And I know that we've asked this question before, is every council meeting, it's the same people all the time, a lot of these. It's just over and over and over. I can't even imagine how many liens we have on some of these properties. When does it get to the point where, I don't, some point, I mean, do we have 20 times what the property's worth when we get to that point?
There, there are different ways that we can collect liens. Normally, for smaller liens, what we do is collect through the tax collector. That's normally the process. If they're of a larger amount, it's more difficult, but we can foreclose on the property. I mean, that's, that's a viable action for us. I don't think that that's something that we want to, you know, try to do for $100 to try to force a foreclosure on property. But it is, it is a remedy that's available to us. You know, it's, when you've got problem properties, they're just hard to deal with. You know, every city has to deal with it. And I think we do a pretty good job of attacking them. But it requires constant effort, that's for sure.
You know, we, we have talked and talked and talked about starting a land bank, and we don't quite ever get there. And I wouldn't be surprised within the next 12 months that that decision will be made, but somebody's got to manage it. So if, if we came to that point, those foreclosures might be more often. But right now, if we did foreclose on a piece of property, we wouldn't be able to take care of it. So we kind of...
Can we put more liens?
Anyway. On the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Backster?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh, 1633, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the hedge plan for the North Rock Electric Department. First reading.
May I give me a motion? Will Jason explain it?
Move suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Backster?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
You're up, counsel.
So the risk management, I'm just talking a lot.
You are.
I feel like. So it's, that's okay. Risk Management Committee, you know, as, as I submitted a quarterly report, I guess at the last city council meeting, where we said we weren't within our hedge limits. We were, because we have what we would call a natural hedge at 57%. So that's our interest in Plum Point. That's our interest in Murray Hydro. We have a, a long-term agreement where we buy all the power from Waste Management. And that really provides about 57% or the natural hedge for the city of North Little Rock. So when we're looking at our minimum and maximum levels that we contract for power at, you know, we want to stay underneath that maximum, but always be above the minimum. And we were creeping in where we were going to be above, and actually, I guess in the first quarter, we were above our maximum limits, just based on natural hedges. So there's really nothing for the Risk Management Committee to do, you know, looking forward to that year three, year four, year five fiscal cycles that are leading out in front of us. I think that we're following a good process right now of taking small bites at the apple, you know, participating in the marketplace, layering in where we see good pricing signals. And, and the pricing signals are good, you know. So right now, this, this approach to buying power seems to be very effective. The, the matter that's being presented before you right now is to fix our hedge limits. So instead of scaling down 80, 70, 60, the Risk Management Committee voted to submit a request to you to raise that FY plus four and FY plus five hedge limits up to 80%, which would allow them greater contracting authority than, than they have right now. And, and would allow them also, especially when it comes to FY plus five, it would allow them to be in compliance. Right now, if, for them to get in compliance, they'd have to shed ownership of some assets. And I don't think that's the intent of city council.
Mr. Fauch?
Is there any financial part on, on the city or the elected department, any financial requirements other than, than the outside purchase?
No, there's, there's no financial requirements with this. You are allowing, you know, if you approve this, you would be allowing the Risk Management Committee to enter into additional contracts, you know, out for, you know, for FY plus four and FY plus five, as those limits are being increased somewhat. They would be authorized to enter into those contracts. The financial exchanges don't occur until, you know, the contracts come to fruition.
So this just mitigates potential spikes in the, in the electric costs to the consumers, then, correct?
Absolutely. That's, and that's the purpose of the entire Risk Management Program. Instead of buying all of our requirements at one time and being locked into a moment of whatever the prices might be, we buy lots of small contracts that get layered in that match what we need for our community. And, and we keep the price down more predictable. Nothing falls off all at one time. It's just a, it's a new approach to buying power.
Thank you. And it's working. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, on the motion.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Backster?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Backster?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, public comment. Jimmy Arden.
Mayor, are you aware that you've got a person in city clerk that's fixing to leave us? She's got 37 years with us.
She couldn't. She's not near that old.
No. I don't think so either. But she's been a big help to a lot of people.
She is a angel, and we're going to miss her terribly. Jimmy's talking about Linda Marshall. I think everybody knows Linda's going to retire on this here shortly. So we're going to, we're going to send a, we're going to have a big send-off for her.
You want me to give the date? The 10th of June.
Right around the corner.
And I was told that people could show up. So you know where I'll be. Now, on a more serious note, at the corner of 19th, a 400 block west 19th, there's been a house with permits to remodel for over, I'm pretty sure I'm 100% right, over two years. And nothing's been done. It's a eyesore. And I've called the council members for that area, and they don't seem to want to respond. So that's one of my grabs. The second one is?
All right.
The old Kroger store. And I talked to the fire chief today. On the corner of, I think it's Pike and Pershing, directly across the street, they keep on piling up stuff to the roadside yards and stuff. And it smells terrible at times. And it will catch on fire. Nobody seems to care about saying about that. I'm not being tacky, just making statements. Thank you.
I see Chief Bradley writing that down. We check on that permit, Sean, that he's talking about. And also, while you're doing that, check on that house at McCain and Hickory that they started building it a year ago, and it's not finished yet. And I hadn't seen anybody work on it in five months. Thank you.
Mayor?
Ma'am?
I may be mistaken, but the property that Mr. Arden, and he'd called me numerous times on it, it's a landscaping business. And they, the last time I checked, they are zoned to have a landscaping business there. It's, it's mulch and bark and whatever.
There on Pershing and Pike?
But it looks terrible.
If you're looking, if you're walking out of the old Kroger door, you look straight across there. It's right over there. Yes. And they've been there for years.
Yeah, I guess I've gone right by it and noticed, not noticed it. Bobby Taylor?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Bobby Taylor. Mayor, I'm going to back up. I don't know how many years that the city council and city attorney passed this ordinance on cluttering up a place like the one beside of me. Whether any of y'all was there or not, it was passed by the city council. And y'all put it in effect. Now then, we're to the code enforcement. The code enforcement comes out, takes pictures, and they take it to court. There's where it stops. And the reason I'm here tonight, I don't want nobody to think that I'm going behind their back. My cards are all out on the table. They can do whatever they want to do with them. But if something ain't done, by the next time this goes to court with the code enforcement, if nothing don't happen, I'll be there. And if it comes out another 30 or 60 days, like he's been getting for the last year, give city hall some unwanted publicity. So I'm asking for help. Now, whether you can do it or not, I don't know. But I just want y'all to know what I'm going to do if something ain't done.
And I appreciate your frustration, but remember that the mayor has no authority over the judge. The mayor has no authority over the judge.
I just, I just want y'all to know?
Okay.
That this does not reflect back on city hall or the code enforcement. I think y'all, I've talked to some of y'all, and I think y'all only have so much. It's the court is the one that makes the final decision. And that's where I'm, that's where I want to direct the public comment to when it makes the ruling there in the court. That's where I want the publicity to go to.
Well, Bobby, as I've told you before, when Bobby Taylor speaks, we all listen. So hopefully the judge and the court system will do the same thing.
But this thing here has been going on for over a year, and it's another 30 or 60 days. That don't make sense to me or nobody.
I agree.
You know, it needs to be some kind of, either that or bring it back to y'all, and y'all take it off the books. That'd be fine, too. You know, I mean, a lot of people wouldn't like it, and I wouldn't. But hey, at least you wouldn't have something out there that the code goes to court with and nobody helps them. It's the city hall, the code enforcement, and the judge. And the judge is the one that makes the final decision. If he don't make it, hey, your, your system is still broke. I'm going to make sure that when it goes on unwanted publicity, that y'all are not going to be involved in it in the code enforcement.
Well, we appreciate that. We always like people watching our back.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And I hope it comes out all right. And I hope I don't have to do that. But the next thing I have is next door to me, is next door to a lady. She's in bad health. She's on oxygen. And the house burnt last Sunday, which would be a, a week now. And burnt the whole top. It all fell in. And she's on oxygen, and that thing stinks. If there's any way y'all can fumigate it or do something to it to help her, I would appreciate it.
And she lives next door to the burned-out house?
Yeah, right next door. It's just her driveway.
All right. Tom Watley is, is in the other room?
But it's one driveway.
Okay.
It's just her driveway. And she can lean against a fence and touch the house. And it's about probably 12 foot. She's probably, ain't over 15 foot from her house to the wall.
Well, we've run across this before, and correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, but, you